Coming to order today is Tuesday, April twentieth, two thousand and twenty-one. Roll call.
Mayor Jardonaya. Vice Mayor Juan Castillo.
Present.
Councilmember Carlos Gonzalez.
Present.
Councilmember Jesus Rodan.
Present.
Councilmember Linda Galindo. Councilmember Martha Garcia. Councilmember Miguel Mielbando. Vice Mayor Kevin Horn.
Um, going on, we're gonna forego all formalities. Um, moving on to our presentations, discussion relating to the selection of a health insurance plan and other related benefits for City of Somerton employees for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-one dash two thousand and twenty-two. Yes, Sir. You wanna go ahead and come up to him?
Good evening, Vice Mayor and councilmembers. Mr. Armando Leon, H R specialist here for the City of Somerton. Um, today we're going to, uh, present to you our proposal for our health benefits for the next fiscal year. Uh, just to give you a brief, um, uh, recap of how we got here. Uh, back in November, uh, we started the process of, uh, of doing, um, going through, um, requisitions to select a new, um, broker, broker of record for the City of Somerton. Um, then in January of two thousand and twenty-one, Capital Financial was selected as a broker of record. Um, and from that point forward, they've taken the lead of, uh, looking at our health insurance plans and, uh, and then getting us to this point where we're at. Uh, today we have Rob Brooks and Tom Beaumont, and they will be presenting, um, with their findings and then making the recommendations for the city, uh, moving forward. So with that, I'll turn it over to.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Well, good evening. Thank you, uh, for having us and, um, really do appreciate the opportunity to be here for many reasons, right? I'm kind of tired of doing meetings, uh, from my home. So it's great. It's great to be in person and seeing people. And, um, as Armando said, we were, uh, uh, thrilled to be appointed, um, as broker record for, uh, the City of Somerton. It's a privilege to, um, be your broker partner. Uh, for those of you that don't really know what that means is we're, uh, a bit of, uh, kind of a guide, uh, in the marketplace to help facilitate and, 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 and guide, uh, decision-making as it relates to, uh, the employee benefit package that you would offer your, uh, employees here. So, um, we really see this as a partnership. Um, and as, uh, Armando had, has, has said, we've, uh, put in quite a bit of work to get to this point. Um, and I think today we've got some good things to discuss and to show. Um, as you can kind of see on the screen, um, we were given, uh, four kind of main objectives in our, in our process this year. Uh, one was to consolidate, uh, the medical plans that you have available to your employees. So currently we have four plans. The idea was potentially to trim that down to, um, less than that. Um, the second objective was to, uh, create a funding, uh, strategy that was sustainable over time. And I know that you all have put in some work already in making some of those decisions, but, uh, at the end of our presentation, we'll talk through some of the, the, uh, contribution strategies that we might suggest. Um, the third is just enhance your benefit programs. And so, uh, we're pretty excited to talk about some of the benefits that will be improved this year, um, and then also potentially, uh, benefits that will be added, uh, this year, obviously, plenty of improvement. So that means, uh, potentially adding a dental and vision program that, that hadn't been available, uh, right now, uh, to your employees. Um, adding an EAP or an employee assistance program, which we feel very important, especially these days, um, which would really enhance your, your benefits. Um, talk a little bit more about a, uh, an enhanced telemedicine benefit and then enhancing the life insurance. Um, and then the fourth is, is really, we want to partner with, uh, Armando and his team to improve the open enrollment experience for employees. Um, we really think as a firm that that's, uh, that's, uh, critical, right? The, uh, the, the expense that the city, um, lays out for its benefit programs is significant, right? In, in your budget, uh, line items. And so, um, to communicate what the city is doing for its employees, uh, as it relates to retention, but also attracting new talent here is, uh, a really important thing. And, um, that can be done in, in really, uh, diligent and, um, uh, focused ways during open enrollment. So we, we'll talk a little bit about how we plan to help, um, and how that process might look a little different this year. Uh, sorry, we said this kind of inform our questions aloud throughout or?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Just shoot the hand up, especially if you're falling asleep too. We're talking about insurance here, so. Uh, so, uh, real quickly, Armando alluded to when we started, uh, this process and engaged with the city, our first kind of, uh, uh, order of business was to do an RFP. So we issued, we wrote, uh, and, uh, uh, created the RFP, um, and issued that, that to the marketplace, uh, sent it to over forty insurance vendors, um, and also, uh, issued, uh, uh, released on the Yuma Sun as well. And so, um, being that we are a consultant, we are not, um, captive agents to any, uh, insurance company. Uh, we can work with all of them. Uh, we're not biased in any way. And so we wanted to open this up to the entire marketplace to receive as many options as we can. So this is a quick summary of the vendors that responded to our RFP. Blue Cross Blue Shield, obviously, is the incumbent vendor. Uh, on the medical side, they, uh, provided their renewal. Uh, they also offered some additional lines of coverage, medical, uh, excuse me, dental life and voluntary life. And you can read, um, obviously, the other carriers that responded. But we are encouraged by that. Obviously, the more vendors that participate, um, the more ability you have, um, to, to receive, uh, the most cost-effective plans, but also, uh, the richest plans possible. So we felt like it was, um, a pretty, uh, successful process. So as it relates to, uh, Tom and I, Tom's gonna take the next, uh, section, so I'm not talking too much here. But we're gonna tackle this kind of backwards. We're gonna talk a little bit about recommendations on the vision life and, um, uh, EAP and dental. And then at the end, we'll talk about the medical plan.
Thank you, Rob. Thank you, Vice Mayor and, and councilmembers for having us this evening as well. Well, good. Hey, Rob, uh, did a great job of setting this up. So here, we're gonna spend just the next few minutes kind of talking of, of a couple of new benefits, the first being the, the dental plan. So one that's not currently offered. As we took a look out at, at, with the RFP responses, obviously, a robust network was, was of big importance to all of us, um, and for you all at the city. So you can see with, with MetLife is what we'll talk about the most here during with recommendations from the, from the committee as well as the directors, um, because of the bundling that can be involved with MetLife for their package for dental vision and life. So we'll kind of allude to that throughout these next few slides. As we look at, you know, specifically in the Yuma County area, MetLife, very robust, a hundred and twenty-one different providers at a hundred and seventy-five locations. So the network is very strong in, in your area around here. With the bundling that we'd, they had mentioned, MetLife came on our best and final offer. So after discussions and after going back to, to allow for a best and final, came back with, if we were to bundle the dental, the vision and the life together, not only would we then get a twenty-four month rate guarantee, so that gives us budget certainty in the next year, but also to enhance and to bring in an EAP program that we'll also discuss. So really with, as we, we'll take a look, MetLife isn't necessarily the cheapest on each of them, but in these type, these costs are very close. And with the advantages of having budget certainty for the next few years, the enhancements to the program, you'll see why the recommendations were made. So with that, on the dental side, really wanted to put together a good benefits package. So what we instructed the market was, hey, we wanna look at a plan that is very rich, gonna cover preventive services at a hundred percent with no deductible. They have a small deductible for an individual or a family, depending on how you're enrolled, um, that would apply only to the basic and the major services, not those preventive services. And also I think it was important that, um, after discussions, to include an orthodontic benefit for children, so up to the age of nineteen, where that will be available. And one thing that we find is certainly with, with our, with our clients, with a lot of our, um, just in, in, in the market in general, is two of the biggest used on a dental was periodonic and endodontic. So we wanted to make sure that those were at the higher level or at an eighty percent level. So this, as we look at these, would bring this dental plan into play where the employee-only rate would be paid a hundred percent by the city. So the next slide we'll pop on to will show us.
Those may not know what periodonic and endodontic mean. Um, I don't blame you. It means just root canals and gum therapy, right? So some of the exciting dental procedures that you can't wait to get up in the morning and do, uh, you know, those are the things that, uh, we try to have as, as most coverage is possible, for that eighty percent versus the fifty percent.
Right. Thank you. Well, this next page just gives an idea of the different carriers that, that were presented, even after the best and final offer. You see highlighted in blue is the MetLife option. So you can see with each of those carriers that the benefit's very similar in what we had asked for, the rates being down at the bottom. It shows what does that cost the city for that employee only, as well as for those folks to bring on their dependents at, at their cost. So very rich, very rich dental program. But move on past the dental. Is there any questions that we could answer on, on either of these slides?
Apologize also upfront, just the amount of information on some of these comparison analysis, there's just so much to compare. Um, so there's, they're kind of small and apologize that we couldn't, um, broaden them, but.
Well, once again, to your point, that helps get to sleep later tonight and look through those. So now let's take a look at the vision plan. So once again with MetLife, with that bundling, so very much same situation. Let's look at a strong network. We're looking at ninety-three providers and ninety-six locations in Yuma County, so very large network. Um, once again with the bundling, twenty-four month rate guarantee gives us that budget certainty in the next year, also with the best and final offer, not only with the bundling, but also reduce the, the vision rates for us at that point. Very rich dental, uh, uh, vision program that we wanted to, to share with you all, which allows for an eye exam every twelve months for just a ten dollar copay. You use that materials benefit for either lenses or contacts, so one or the other. Um, and that benefit is available once every twelve months. Frames would be available every twenty-four months, and that allows you to choose any frame up to a hundred and thirty dollar retail value. This would also be with the employee-only rate would be paid a hundred percent by the city, or any dependent coverage would be at the cost of the employee to add those on. So we'll pop on to the next slide. Will give us the same thing we looked at on dental, but now we're gonna show the different vision carriers that responded. Once again, the MetLife in shaded in blue, um, where we can see that dental, or with vision, we're obviously dealing with much less costs as far as those monthly fees, but a very, um, competitive offer. And once again, with that bundling and with the, with the discounted rate, um, as well as the EAP we'll discuss, that's where the recommendation would come into play. Anything on the, on the vision before we move on? Okay. So right, currently, right now, you have in place thirty thousand dollar life benefit that's, that is paid by the city. We're looking at with the MetLife offer, moving that, increasing that benefit to fifty thousand dollars per benefit eligible employee that would be paid a hundred percent by the city. With that, MetLife is also able to offer then what's called voluntary or supplemental life. So that gives all the employees the ability to then purchase additional insurance if they, if they wish to do so with their own monies, to then go up it to a higher coverage level. And if they choose that for themselves, also would have the option to cover their spouse and/or their dependent children. So with that, you know, just kind of highlights, the employee on the supplemental, on the voluntary, could elect up to five times their annual salary, not to, not to exceed five hundred thousand dollars. So depending on what they chose, would then determine for their spouse, uh, cause that spouse can't be more than fifty percent of the employee rate, uh, but can add that in increments of ten thousand. And then the children would have a few options available, um, to, to add, to, to bring the dependent children on the plan as well. Once again, the voluntary benefit would be paid for entirely by the employee. Then, uh, I think one of the most important benefits, especially has been very much amplified during this pandemic, is the employee assistance program or EAP. So one of the offers that MetLife came back with on their best and final was to bundle in an employee assistance program, we think is very important. This, this is a hundred percent confidential, a hundred percent paid for by the city. It allows for the employee and anyone of, any members in their household to utilize this benefit. So they don't have to be covered under the medical plan, don't have to be on there, that any one of their household can use it. And it's not only just for counseling or for tough times, maybe the mental health, there's other services available such as financial, legal, uh, even helping to find childcare. So it's a great resource and one that, that opens up, um, a lot of, really have found this benefit to be so valuable during this time, really have seen great utilization, uh, across a lot of our clients as well. But with that, um, it also includes five face-to-face visits. So not only telephonic, it's available twenty-four hours a day, but having the ability to have face-to-face mental health sessions if those are required. So with that, let's take a peek on to the next slide, which then shows just kind of these different offers, where the top portion is the, all these carriers that are listed at a twenty-five thousand dollar life, basic life, the one that's a hundred percent paid by the city. The bottom portion shows the fifty thousand life. Fifty thousand dollars is the recommendation of the committee, of the directors. Um, and that's where you can see, once again, MetLife shaded in blue, and you can see where that five face-to-face visit employee assistance program is added into that. Any questions on the life? All right. Rob had mentioned kind of one of our objectives as well was to look at enhancing that telemedicine program. Currently with Blue Cross Blue Shield, you have built into that program that what's called Blue Care Anywhere. So that is a tele, uh, a telemedicine program. And for those folks that are currently on that, the PPO or the copay plans, one of those two plans, there's, there's a zero dollar consult fee for calling and utilized in this, this telemedicine benefit. If the folks that are on the high deductible health plan, and this is due to regulations by the IRS where there can't be their, uh, uh, any copay or any services provided to tell that deductible is met, so they just have a forty-nine dollar consult fee for any of the high deductible health plan or those HSA plan members. Also, in addition to the medical to call on, on telemedicine, also have board certified counseling and psychiatry visits. You see that for the, for the traditional PPO plan members, that's a twenty and a forty dollar copay, a little bit higher for those high deductible health plan members. But what is, this is included, this cost for this is included within the Blue Cross rates that you're currently paying, so there's no additional cost. One thing that we were tasked with of looking at enhancing this program came with a couple reasons. One is, is right now, with it being part of the medical program, every call that's made, although saving money certainly for the, the employees, is experience or those claims that are utilized to determine the renewal, right? So what we're looking at on, now on this, now on the bottom portion, is another telese, telemedicine provider called Healthiest U. Healthiest U is an independent provider, so they're outside of the, not built into the Blue Cross plan. And so what that does, because it's not integrated with the, with the medical plan, we're then able to offer that, for those high deductible health plan members, the, the high deductible plans, no consult fee for their calls either, because now it's outside of the medical, so that's allowed to, to happen. So as Healthiest U gives same access twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, three hundred sixty-five days a year, also can include all of the family members. So they don't have to, you could just have your employee only has the coverage, but their family members are all available. And what this does is, the claims, any of these calls that are made, not only is a great benefit for the employee to save money, save time, even a productivity, you know, within the, the city of not having to leave to go to the, the physician officer, that visit, um, allows for that, for these now, these claims to stay off of the medical plan. So they're not used for the renewal that will come up, it's done on an annual basis. Also gives the ability now, because it's not integrated with the medical plan, if you were to choose, is up to the city, to be able to include part-time staff, or even those staff that didn't take, for whatever reason, waived the medical program, excuse me, gives them the ability to utilize this benefit. So a great thing to offer to folks that, that whether there's part-time staff or, or don't take that, that medical. Any questions on the, on the telemedicine?
Tom?
Yeah.
Um, one thing that I have to explain to, to the directors of this story, uh, what I did mention to them, Healthiest U is more of a membership, it's not, uh, that type of system that which helps on the loss racial prevention over the long run.
Correct.
Vice Mayor, uh, Somerton School District uses, uh, Healthiest U. Uh, when I was there, I think on a yearly basis, we saw the increase, uh, by time I left, I think it was, uh, about eighty to individuals, uh, or members rather, and then there was savings of over a hundred thousand dollars overall on the loss ratio. So you'll, you don't see the savings right away, but you see them on the long-term in terms of how much your increase for the following year could have been, uh, based on the utilization of, of this membership. And I call it membership because it is membership. Basically, the way I see it is, uh, magazine or Spotify, and not only you can use it, but anybody in your fam, and your family can use it without an extra charge. That's, that's the way I see it.
Right.
Is it, is that right?
That's absolutely correct. You're out, you're a hundred percent on each of those. And that, that's really is, is the, the success of these programs has been because of that. You're able to bring such a great benefit that you could bring to folks outside of the medical program, help to control some of those costs within the medical program, um, while providing a, a much-needed benefit. All right. Yeah, thank you. Any other questions?
Going into the telemedicine too, it, it kind of speaks to the environment that we're in as well, where folks, um, I think are, are much more open to seeking services, at least more routine services, uh, through this, this way, uh, much more so than maybe three, four, or five years ago. But now, uh, obviously in our, in our COVID environment, uh, providers are, are much more equipped, uh, to see patients this way, um, and, and patients are much more willing to see their provider this way.
Oh, great point. And it's, and because on the most, for the most part, in a non-pandemic time, telemedicine, where just because you don't wanna go to the doctor's office, you'd rather just make a phone call, is not a covered benefit. But it has been allowed because of the current pandemic, but it will go away for all the, all the medical plans. So these build-in, like those building with Blue Cross, these type of programs that are available, really bring some great value add, uh, i- i- in a time that it's very much needed. Now, one of the big concerns with the pandemic was that folks were gonna forego care that very much is needed, and that can start to increase claims as we open back up and think people get out. So this is a way to keep folks engaged, to control their health as well. Great benefit to have.
The question, the question that I have on telemedicine, and I know, I, I've seen happen, can happen to me, when you wanna do Zoom to a doctor instead of going to his office, uh, I had like, look at Bushel, and well, suddenly he said, you know, you have to come down?
Right.
Instead of doing it to Zoom anymore, cause it doesn't cover it anymore.
That's right.
So some providers will probably not be willing to do that. If they want you to go to the office, or servers are not there, but it was only for Sunday.
Right. No, and that's, and that's absolutely right. And that's where we were mentioning that this typically is not a covered benefit just for that type of scenario. So if you have a primary care doctor, a doc that you have a relationship with, you just don't have the ability to pick up and call that doctor. But during the pandemic, there were some that were allowed up until recently. This type of a program, what you currently have in place with the medical plans as well as this Healthiest U, you don't get the same doctor every time, so they have their own network of providers. So you always are gonna have somebody that's available. They can even write prescriptions over the phone. So, you know, when you look at the fact of being able to, you know, instead of leaving the office and, and, and losing the productivity for a few hours, can make that call, whether it's on your mobile device, if you need the camera, that's, that's available. Uh, but you do that with, especially on the Healthiest U program, with no fee for the member, that now instead of going and paying that office visit copay, so the doctor can say, yep, I need to write you a refill on your prescription, maybe even doing that over the phone where that saves, keeps all that money from hitting the, the city's plan.
That's a great point. That was, that every, uh, provider, uh, in the Healthiest U network is a, there's a licensed decision.
Any other questions on the telemedicine benefits? Okay. You know, Rob had mentioned that, that another one of, of our task is certainly something we find to be very important is, is to offer support to the directors, to Armando and Priscilla and your staff, you know, during the open enrollment period, as Rob had mentioned, I mean, there's, there's a lot of money spent, there's a lot of time that's gone into it. This is a great benefit package that you currently offer, and we're looking to even enhance that further. So a couple of things I wanted to point out, in addition to several other support tools that we'll provide, a couple of things we really wanna look at this year, one is an online benefit system. So now the employees, rather than paper forms kind of chasing that down, will have the ability to all go on to an online system and enroll in all of their benefits at that point. Another part of the bundling offer of MetLife also included this online system. So a lot of times, you know, these can run, depending on the system chosen, can have quite a hefty price tag. So to have part of this bundling process where we can even include the Blue Cross Blue Shield medical plans, uh, as well as all these, the current benefits is there as well as the new benefits, the employees then would enroll online, uh, to make that process much smoother. From there, you know, with our alert, we'd be able, be able to do the online, whoops, excuse me, medical enrollment, um, as well as then there'll be what are called, uh, electronic feeds that will go to the, the ancillary to MetLife for the dental, the vision, will also be able to have the voluntary life, all the benefits that they could, they could look at to enroll.
The benefits of that, obviously, obviously, the convenience to your employees, um, the fact that there's a system that is, and stood up, uh, not only during open enrollment, but throughout the year, um, as you hire your employees, that system will be available. But it also relieves some of the admin burden, as Mary talked, so as, as Tom had mentioned, uh, the, the eligibility is sent directly to the carrier, um, and so there's not gonna be anyone having to process an enrollment form or upload information to a carrier. And then the information then will eventually feed back into your payroll system as well.
All right. Any questions on the online enrollment system?
Okay.
Well, there'll be, you know, we have a lot of employees who are not just IT educated, whatever. So there'll be any, any training on that for them, or somebody will be helping them? Your kids?
Well, certainly, uh, councilmember, councilmember Rodan, uh, as, as Priscilla was our benefits coordinator, we'll, we'll make her available to assist them as well. So someone that can't use a computer or doesn't have access to the computer that's out in the field, certainly they can come in and they can visit with her and, and will help them through the, through the enrollment process. That's fine.
And there'll be work sessions for the employees as well, so it's not like we're just gonna send them the links. Uh, there'll be some educational workshops, uh, as part of the rollout process.
And addition to that?
It's, it's in Spanish as well.
Absolutely. That system, um, can be also in, in, in Spanish. Yes. And we still, you know, we still supply the, the electronic links for paper apps, so folks that, um, as Armando mentioned, you know, with Priscilla himself, any of his team, you know, someone that absolutely can, would have any of the other forms and, and all the, the materials to, to assist with that.
If they didn't go through the Arizona State Retirement System to log in, to create our account number, and this is a lot easier than that. I was very tired.
You know, another area that we wanna provide support, and it kind of goes along with, with, with your question, councilmember, as far as, as assistance, you know, to help. If they can't do online, we also wanna provide this benefit guide, which what we'll do is, is put together of not only discussing each of the, the benefit offerings, the new benefits, if those are approved with dental and vision, um, we really wanna look and we'll talk and Rob will discuss on the medical side, on the health savings account, making a, uh, making a recommendation for some monies to be provided to the employees', uh, health savings account, to be able to provide information about health equity that we will work with, with Blue Cross, to, you know, the information to really help them understand that benefit. So not just kind of putting up, here's the rates, what it would cost you to bring your dependents on, or what it costs for voluntary life insurance, but here are some things to help you navigate, to help you understand, help you make better decisions. Now, we find that over the years, it used to be these, we'd have open enrollment meetings where everyone said, all right, it's mandatory to come. You know, as an employee on that side for many years, it's always like, well, that's great, my benefits are going down, my rates are going up, I don't, I don't wanna go to this meeting. Well, you know, a lot of times, maybe that employee isn't the decision-maker or needs to, or to be able to sit with their family, discuss with their spouse, what's best for them, what makes the most sense. And so the benefit guide also allows for that to happen. So not only do they have the online where you can do it in your own environment, but then having tools, resources that can help to explain and really help, cause the goal is to just not only to provide a robust benefits package, but make sure that folks understand it and know how to use it.
I mean, well, a lot of things that I didn't remember doing myself. Every day, every time there was a change, I made a store, now I'm retired, but, uh, I didn't even pay attention to the benefit of that. All the one, other, is it eighty, twenty? Is it seventy, thirty? Is it, uh, fifty, forty? If he was eighty, twenty, I didn't care at all, whatever, at all. But again, it is important, see, cause now, if you retire, and been retired, you know, insurance, et cetera, I look at, because, you know, I look at the signs. But realistically speaking, sometimes you think, you know, we gotta get to the mission of, the players know, there's a benefit guide. This is what you can have when you go to the hospital, when you go to the doctor, when you go to this and that, and this and et cetera.
That's right.
It does, it does help to do it.
It's helping to navigate. I mean, it's a, it's a tough, it's tough out there. I tell you though, you're, you'll read these guys now, cause this is so pretty and it goes like a mag-
Anything, et cetera.
That's right.
It does it does help to do it.
It's helping to navigate. I mean, it's a it's a tough, it's tough out there. I tell you though, you'll read these guys now because this is so pretty and it goes like a magazine. You won't want to miss it. But it is an electronic, we'll put this together and we provide an electronic link. So you can send that out. We can even, now for all the younger folks, we're finding these QR codes like we've all gotten used to at the restaurants that don't have menus anymore. We can even embed a QR that you can put whatever is sending out or whatever, where they put their camera up. You can be in a presentation and put it up on a screen and have them pull that up. So we'll have in this, and so when you open that up electronically, it really does read like a magazine. It actually is called a flip book, is is kind of the back pages. But yeah, it's Tyson, you hit it on the head. Let's let's educate the folks and help them use their benefits correctly and get them the appropriate benefits.
To your comment too, we we stand available and ready to help Armando facilitate open enrollment meetings, informational session, be it in in person and also virtual. So a part of the rollout will, as you said, kind of include some working sessions, but we'll equip employees with as much information as they'll allow themselves to take in. And to your question, council member, part of the benefit guide will include instructions on how to enroll, how to log in, those types of things.
After the enrollment period is over, is the employee does not enroll, is it going to have an opportunity in the other time to enroll, or is it going to be for the whole year?
No, there's a there's a definite period of time that they need to enroll. It has to be done, yeah, it has to be done in that period. So because there's some, there's some hard deadlines that we need to meet in order to, for example, in order for employees to select a plan and then to get the payroll deduction started so that the plan is ready to go into effect on July first, we need to start the payroll deduction in the first part of June. So and that's so that we have those payroll deductions are to then pay for the premium for July, when we go into July. But that means that open enrollment has to happen during May. And there'll be plenty of time to get everybody enrolled. But we'll we'll be pushing everybody to either enroll or if they're not going to enroll, to then opt out.
Part of the system will be built to include their current elections, so their default enrollment. So if someone doesn't remember what plan they're on, or at least the medical portion, it will include what they're currently on. And they'll have the ability then to change. And if the plan that we they're currently on has been discontinued, then you'll they'll be moved to the most appropriate plan or most similar plan.
And there is a part portion of that benefit guide that does talk to your question of, you know, open enrollment is that one time to make any changes, additions, taking away, adding benefits. Because the IRS is very strict that once that plan year starts on July first, only changes that would be allowed for new hires, obviously, and that'd be the waiting period. It would be what's called a qualifying life event. So did their spouse lose coverage? Do they have, do they get married? Do they get a divorce? Do they have a child? That presents another, what would be an open enrollment opportunity for that individual. So otherwise, just jumping off and coming on at will is not allowed during the plan.
And the thing about it is that it doesn't really affect my life, you know, when I'm looking at it. And it's not, I don't care to get, I don't know, might be playing the market days, you know, of plans or providers that choose from and that. And this is that, all you're going to do is just find a plan, right? You know, if you want to stick to the plan that are now, you can, right? And and just whatever's going to be added, which is the provision of the.
Right.
And and so the plans are coming up, coming up in a little bit on the next slide coming up. There'll be the the same plans that were available under the current plan year are not necessarily going to carry over. We will have some new plans, but we'll go over those.
Equal to what they had already, right?
Or better. They're better. They're actually better than what they have.
Well, that's a great segue into turning over. Let's start talking about the medical. So Rob's going to take us through kind of on the recommendations, what currently and what what the recommendations are moving forward, so.
From a timing perspective, how about how much time do we have? Just want to be respectful of that. Okay, twenty minutes, cool. Um, so on the screen is kind of an overview of 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 where we're at now on the left hand side under our current plans. Potentially, where what we're proposing to move to in the 2021, 2022 school, excuse me, fiscal year. So right now, we've got, as you can see, two HSA plans. So those are the types of plans that are paired with a high deductible or high deductible health plan. And those plans are very similar in that their deductible is $5,000. The only differentiation there between those two plans, those first plans, one is 7050 and one is 9050. And so that 70% means that percentage or coinsurance that the that Blue Cross pays for the claim once you've met your deductible on that high deductible health plan, right? So that HSA 5,000 deductible 7050 is your lowest cost plan. We see the least amount of enrollment in that plan. Right now, we have about eight employees that are enrolled in that plan in some way. And then that HSA 5,000 plan with a 90% coinsurance, about 14 employees are currently enrolled on on that plan. Those plans are very similar. And and our recommendation is to discontinue that 7050 plan mainly because it's obviously has a higher deductible. But right now, your employees have chosen not to enroll in that plan. And so to have two very similar plans really might not be the best strategy. The HSA 5,000 9050 plan, we are recommending potentially keeping that one and or replacing that one with an HSA plan that has a lower deductible. And you can see to the right in that box, a new plan that potentially you would consider is an HSA 2,800 plan. So the deductible will drop from 5,000 to 2,800, and then we would hold that coinsurance at 9050. That makes sense? We'll talk a little bit about what that scenario looks like in a minute. Dropping down below that, the PPO 6,000 7050 plan. Again, we only have one employee enrolled on that plan right now. It has a high deductible $6,000, but this is a more traditional PPO plan. When I say traditional PPO plan, it has co-pays to go see the doctor, it has co-pays to the specialist, it has co-pays for urgent care and ER. When you fill prescriptions, you're paying co-pays. Your deductible in that scenario really only comes into play when you have an inpatient or outpatient type scenario. So it's a little bit more rich benefit plan and it's a little bit more costly. But it's very similar, as you can see, to your to that bottom plan, that PPO 5,000, again, with the deductible at 9050. Eighty seven people or enrolled employees are enrolled on that bottom plan, that 5,000 9050 plan. So our recommendation is to discontinue that 6,000 deductible plan, keep that 9050 plan, and then potentially add a new PPO plan that would be maybe more considered a buy up or Cadillac type plan that would have a $1,500 deductible and 100% coinsurance after you met that deductible. So there's a lot to consider here, but here's, there's a lot of information to take in, and I apologize again. If you can see that red box, that is our current scenario. And that highlights all of the current plans. You can see in those columns, we have all four of our current plans. Below that, dropping down, you can see our current rates here. And then to the left here, you can see my my marker, that shows our current enrollment on each of the plans. So if we made no changes and decided to renew as is and kept our four current plans, you can see really the only change between any of the plans is the out of pocket maximum on the HSA 5,000 and the HSA 9050 plan increased from 6,900 to 7,000. But again, none of the plans would change if you decided to keep the renewal from Blue Cross and make no changes. As you can see here, after some negotiation, after our best and final negotiation with with Blue Cross, the actual rate increase is a 3.8% increase from current.
Does it board?
Yes. Dropping down here, again, we're showing the current plan in that red box to the left. The right hand box highlighted in yellow is the first option. And that would be to, again, consolidate into three plans, keeping the HSA 5,000 and 9050 plan, so that $5,000 deductible HSA plan, keeping that $5,000 rich plan in the middle, that PPO plan. And then to the right, you can see highlighted in blue would be that new Cadillac plan that would have a lower deductible of 1,500, a low out of pocket maximum at 2,500, and then co-pays for services throughout. The second scenario here, again, our current scenario is in red. To the right is a option two with two plan enhancements. And that would be, you can see in in blue on that left hand column, lowering the deductible on that HSA plan to $2,800. Anything that is denoted in in green font, if you can even see that, that small, is a benefit enhancement to your existing plan. Anything in red would be a decrement. There obviously isn't any decriments here. So the suggestion here would be replacing that HSA plan, keeping that middle plan as your PPO mid-plan, and then again, including that buy up plan for folks that want a little bit more coverage and are okay paying out of their pocket for some of that. So one of the questions is in 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 speaking to the the insurance committee last week, our two scenarios, this HSA 5,000 9050 plan and then potentially the city kicking in $2,500 of HSA contribution versus the right hand side would be the HSA 2,800 plan for that lower deductible plan and then the city kicking in $1,400 into that employee HSA account. We think any contribution into that account is important. It will incent employees to move in that direction. Many folks are hesitant to enroll in an HSA plan because it's first dollar out of your pocket, right? So if you go to the doctor, you fill a prescription, you're not paying a co-pay, you're paying the bill charges or the the reduced charges based off the network discounts. But it's a little bit different, right? You're not paying a $25 co-pay, you're paying a percent of the bill. And so having money in that account is 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 obviously something that gives some employees some confidence and and will challenge them to move in in this this plan direction. You can see below that what the cost per month for that employee would be in each of these plans. So on this left hand side, option 5,000, it's a free plan to the employee, no deduction. And then you can see below that how much they would pay for employee, spouse, child, and family. Obviously, the deductible is higher in that plan, and so the cost of the insurance is lower. And as a result, they would pay less out of their pocket per pay. As opposed to the one on the right, that $2,800 deductible plan, you can see how they would pay obviously a little bit more for that plan.
I just had one, a couple of quick things on here. With the HSA contribution from the city that's that's been, these couple of options discussed, the HSA account is an employee owned account. Once those monies hit that employee's account, it's their money. So we it gives you the the is with the city, the ability to say, whether it's a 2,500 HSA contribution or a 1,400, not to put it all in at the beginning of the plan year, you can parse that out monthly, orderly, whatever you would. So the thought being if somebody were to leave their employment, instead of just having front loaded and they just got all that money upfront, and now becomes their money, you can parcel that out throughout the year. Now, and another thing, and I think Rob hit on it well, is the is the fact that we always kind of focus, a paradigm really starting to shift on the HSAs is they get more adherence and more folks coming on to them. Because we always focus too much on the on the folks that utilize the plans. If you have a lot going on, let's look at the people that are helping. You get 2,500 or 1,400 into your account, you go to your preventive care for the year, you're starting the next year, already with half of your deductible already satisfied. Now you make contributions on your own, the city continues to make contributions, you have a few good years. You can even start using investment options within that HSA account. So I could talk for days on that and I won't. But anyway, wanted to just kind of point that out. You guys have the ability to parse how those those monies would be distributed to your folks.
No, we're running up on time, but the last.
Here's a question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Anyone that they don't use for over the following year?
Always theirs, never goes away. You could never take anything out and just pay your taxes in retirement if you wanted to. It's always yours.
You can also use it for Dental and Vision, expect this as well. So this last page, again, I I do apologize for just the the size of it. But what we attempted to do here was to show the city costs based off the line of coverage. So the top section is is the estimated enrollment on that left hand column. The the right hand columns would include the actual build rates from each of the carriers for the medical. Below that is any HSA contribution in in each of the scenarios. And then below that is the Trans Mexico Plan, life insurance, and then the Dental Vision. And then below that would be the telemedicine.
So what's your doubt, Jerry? I mean, have you figured out the difference between what's going to be a portion of money that will be put in the city versus this year versus to this year?
Well, from the very beginning, as far as the the current, I think it was going to be increased by 3.8. So it's a decrease of $36,000 if we left as if. Now, there is two options that we do have on there. And and the difference is depending on if the city is going to contribute to a NCHC type of system, then it could be a difference between $36,000 or $40,000 increase. The difference is, remember, even though the the benefits increase, we're adding the Dental and Vision, which is, you know, a huge plus that we've never had before. Obviously, life insurance also is going to be increased and then EAP. So overall, it is a it is a huge increase, not a huge increase, but it is an increase, obviously, from what we have. As far as sustainability, it is, it is sustainable.
I don't know if I recall, has already been budgeted? Where's it in? I don't know, do we already budget it?
No, we're still going to to the process as far as budget. But it is going to be in the budget.
Maybe it was not part of the last decision we had in vision.
No, because we we just got these this information. Because usually for renewals, they don't come out until, they usually end in February, you don't get the renewals until late March, early April. That's the only time that you actually do get the renewals. So you, that still was not considered. Obviously, there is things to consider, which is the Arizona State Retirement System, which there's an increase, the PSPRS for police and fire, that that's going to be an increase. There is an increase on both of those costs. But we we looked at this plan as well, so there is one major increase.
I wasn't budgeting for this new fiscal year.
Yes, absolutely.
Sorry.
Okay, I'll ask a question. I was just going to ask, do we have an amount that was budgeted for medical purchases?
What do you mean?
Like do we, like what was our, let's say, our cap?
For last year?
For this year? Or are we not there yet?
We're not there.
No, we're not there yet as far as the caps concerned. Any other question?
I guess. You know, we're adding so many benefits that we didn't have before for our employees. And the money was that we're not going to pay, you know, it was going to pay as much.
One thing to to always consider is that even though there is an increase, the long term is what I'm worried, not worried about, the long term is what I look at, not necessarily the the cost now, as what would be the cost two, five, 10 years from now, knowing that health insurance is skyrocketing. So even if that $5,000 deductible, the increase, you know, 3.8, this year has been a kind of, I always say a fluke year because not not many people went to the doctor. Not many, not many people went to Mexico because there is that kind of Western Mexico plan as well. So there's just differences as far as what happened this year was moving forward. And remember, Fucat Blue Shield was new to the city because we had EMI last year. So it's still estimates at this point of what's going to happen. And then the other scenario is how many people will migrate to possibly, if there is a decision going into a new deductible high plan. to a new high deductible high plan with an HSA contribution. So there might be some migrations on there as well.
I guess, a 3.5% increase overall, including Dental, Vision, and better life insurance for the employee is astonishing. I mean, we've had years where we were hit with a 40% increase in our budget, 30%, and that was depending on the claims and the workers that we had on the city. So all things set aside, the percentage that we're going up with is just very, very sustainable, very beneficial to the city's, I'd say, backers.
I think overall, what these plans are going to do, it'll definitely help with recruitment and retention of employees as well. The benefits package is going to be very rich, very competitive in our area, and I think it'll allow us, the opportunity to retain employees, help us with retention, but also on the recruitment side. I think it'll be a huge plus when you have all benefits to offer, such as we're offering at the moment.
So this is, do show that the number one concern for someone coming to work for the city is obviously salary, and the number two concern is what are my benefits, or what are my benefits look like, and when we show them something like this, this could be the the decision-maker for that employee to come work for us, and we can decide what we need to do.
Just looking at the numbers right now, when we look at the renewal with no changes, it's 1,36,163,09, right? And, you know, if you're looking at the scenario one and two, if you're looking at scenario one, an increase of 1,136,465, that's like $100,000. So it's really not 3.8, it's, you know, but I know we're adding the medical division and the increased life insurance, so in reality, it comes out like 10%, right?
Well, remember, Vice Mayor, that number, the 1.136, that also includes the HSA contribution of $2,500, so it's a $55,000, so that's the difference there as well. So not necessarily just the benefit itself, is the benefit of that contributing to the HSA.
Yeah, and on both scenarios, we have that option, whether it's going to be the 25 or the 14.
Right, and that's the difference there.
So it's more of like an upfront cost, I'm going to start at making those contributions to the HSA accounts, however, long-term, it could be a strategy that can help us to encourage employees to go to those lower-cost plans instead of going to the more expensive PPO plan, and for sustainability purposes, I think that could be a good strategy moving forward.
Any other questions, folks?
I think that being able to offer more benefits to employees, like, and it comes to keep them here with us, we have a lot of, for them and their family.
Part of that online benefit system that we looked at has what's called a hidden paycheck. It also can be utilized to show not only the salary, but the value of benefits the city provides, it really shows that full benefit package and what the value that they are and the benefits they are getting.
Last question, Rob, you mentioned your meeting with the Health Insurance Committee as well.
Yeah, and the recommendation there, sure. Last Tuesday, we met with the Insurance Committee, and the recommendation that they made was Scenario Two with the lower deductible and the $1,400 contribution, so this scenario here to the right. Obviously, recommending also the Dental Vision, EAP life insurance, and also the telemedicine. Thank you all for the time, Vice Mayor and members, appreciate you all.
Meaning, that's what, that we know?
Meaning, sir.